Chardon, I had one. I've had the, yeah.
It's, and that's what, that's Caroline.
She done what? You wanna unmute?
I just, no. Yes, yes, again, on Alex.
It's not, because you don't want to release them, and you're right, you don't want to add volunteer organizations. But on the other hand, it's too much for the money. The schools should dictate to them, like, hey, if you're gonna be a school support organization, we're funneling you all this business essentially. You've gotta have, like, actual board, you've gotta have two signers, there needs to be some check, because none of these have check accounts.
But like, the rec board's not even a, it's not a school support organization. It's its own separate entity, it's not.
Yeah.
We don't, I mean, like, boosters and all that, that the rec is not.
The closer the schools get to these non-government entities, the more they could be considered government entities.
Sorry.
Yeah. It's all good, I said, I just.
I think we just continue education.
Yeah.
I participated in a four hours, you know, like, six hours an hour. That, he owed these, and he even, and gave us some good ideas.
Well, that's good.
So.
We're gonna, it's Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, it is, what time is it, ten?
Oh, three.
Oh, three. We're gonna open the special meeting of the Budget Commission. First on the agenda, you have minutes, good minutes?
Just breaking.
Ten minutes.
Oh, there's nothing better.
Prior minutes.
But there is nothing.
Oh, so you just did that as a fuller?
We always.
It looks like you did more work than you did?
We would've put the dates.
Okay, so let's go right to West G.
Okay, so this is for the Budget Commission made a motion for an adjustment in West Georgia local schools twenty-five, twenty-six school year tax budget. Of doing a shift of the one mil inside permanent improvement up to general fund. Recognizing that the school year straddles a calendar year for the tax collection. So on the side underneath the general fund, I indicated that the point five mil, it's a point five mil for their first half of twenty-six. Because it's on collection year. And then I did the same thing down in permanent improvement, so that they pick up the second half. Second vice versa. Anyway, so the general fund has a beginning cash balance of twenty-five million, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars. The estimated revenue with the shift is thirty-four million, two hundred seventy-seven fifty-three. The adjusted expenses, because we're taking into consideration the negative cash balance from the emergency fund. Is thirty-three million, nine thirty-seven, nine fifty-six, leaving an ending cash balance in the general fund of twenty-five million, three sixty-two, six eighty-seven. The emergency levy fund, again, was four million, seven eighty-one, one thirty-two, projected half straight fifty percent because of the split year. And the estimated expense was at four million, eight hundred forty-eight, six seventy-three. Leaving the negative cash balance covered by the general fund.
Yeah, I don't understand. Why are we now going to a split year when our revenue is countered?
Because Karen, Karen already has things projected that need payment, like what she had discussed at the other meeting. So that's why we're doing it. I did include.
Even in, in what fund?
The permanent improvement.
Yeah, but there, but there's more cash than there is expenditures.
But that goes back to our discussion last week of, you know, we have additional funds, additional needs in permanent improvement. I think we did that when we sent you the summary that we sent in for the middle school with thirteen point eight million dollars that we're dedicated to doing. Plus the water filtration system. And the fact that we put on a P I, like, we put out our bond like this year, so we, we have more than. We have need in that P I fund. I understand what you're doing from the standpoint of what the Budget Commission voted. It is, there are two different things, what they have.
They combined on the other year.
The legitimate amount is a half. That's over a half.
But this, this doesn't happen until January of next year.
But we pick up twenty-four in our fiscal year twenty-four.
I know, you, you account for it in twenty-four. But what? We have, we, we're gonna get into trouble if we switch calendar, if we switch terms of what we're dealing with versus what schools deal with.
I, I have two Schedule Bs.
So, so here's one of my points. We're gonna have to somehow remember that six hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred thirty-three is coming out of that next budget cycle. Otherwise, it's not what the Budget Commission approved.
That's what they did this year. They took half of the levy research trust. I know, but I'm saying, this year, they did it for what we did last year to account for it.
It's right.
I mean.
But we passed it as one number. We didn't pass it as split year numbers.
Well, we are, we're shifting the inside mileage, we're passing it as.
No, there's six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars still going in inside mileage. That's half.
That's for the twenty-four.
That's for this year.
It's your twenty-four, it's still our twenty-five, twenty, it's still our future. It's already been done.
But we're not shifting the mileage until January first.
That's right.
There's still, but in this budget that we're approving, we're approving the budget that starts July first.
We're approving an annual distribution of revenue.
I see what you're saying. Well, we're kinda doing both. So that's the problem, and the law says.
I worry though, is we have to somehow remember.
Yeah.
That only half of it is being obligated.
The law says we have to approve their budget starting July first. The law also says that we have to certify revenues, but when we certify revenues.
It's always annual.
It's always annually.
You can't change taxes.
So, so we're both right. You're both right.
Well, yeah, but I, my worry is the how are we, what mechanism do we have?
We'll have a rate resolution that will match the second Schedule B, which has zero permanent improvement. And four point five mils going up to the general. So the first one is showing the split. Because it's.
You've got two different, there's got two different.
Yeah, knowing, we're showing us zeroing out the inside permanent improvement.
Yeah.
But we have to show some revenue because we're, this is, we're gonna, for the, this collection year, we're gonna still, there's still gonna be six months of that revenue.
I would argue.
High appropriations.
I would argue that that sheet does not, is not this year's revenue, it's next year's revenue.
This part is, but this is half of this year's revenue. Has to be.
Half of their year revenue.
But, but we're, we have to approve their budget starting July first.
I understand, well.
By March first.
I understand we're approving their budget, but I'm looking at when the money gets captured. Now, I just wanna make sure we have a mechanism to capture the money.
So we, yeah, so we've already done the split on this other Schedule B. And this Schedule B actually will mirror the rate resolution we will give to them. And I explained to Karen that the rate resolution will be different than what the certified revenue.
But it'll be half of the amount.
Correct.
Okay.
It's like this, it's out of there.
Which one are you pointing out?
That's last year's action.
This one here, without zero and permanent improvement.
All the range.
No, it isn't this half.
We just have two point three involved.
Oh. Well.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, right. I think they did it right.
Because it goes into, the four point five goes into the general fund, and that will, it's probably, as we've discussed. Will be mitigated by the twenty mil floor. And this one, I'm saying, this was the.
You're gonna see a twenty mil floor mitigation annually, but you're gonna see the reduction of permanent improvement over two years.
Yes.
See, that, that's why, that's a, that doesn't make sense.
No, no.
State's not gonna change. State's not gonna do a half of the correction.
It'll be a two-year, two-year. It will be, because it'll be your second half of twenty-six or twenty. We've already had that, yeah, that's already been approved.
At least before Monday, January first.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to report to the state a half of it. In order to make her numbers jive with our numbers.
No.
Over two years.
No.
No, we're reporting to the state that we're shifting the mileage.
Then, then you're, then calendar-wise, you're gonna see the effect on your inside mileage decline in one year. Two school years for you, but in one calendar year.
Yes, correct.
And we're showing it over two calendar years.
That sounds how our budget is.
We're showing it over two budget cycles.
Well, yeah, that's two years, but.
Two years, yes.
But, but we're only.
We were to do that last year, that's why, that's why.
As long as somebody's keeping track.
That's why you have the, we're fully in charge of that.
I'm not gonna be in charge of that.
But see, that's why they reflected the half here.
Right.
When they did our Schedule B.
All right, and then we ended up, that's for that amendment that you're going to vote on as well as the half of year coming in, that's the next one.
Okay.
So then, just for recap then, the total mileage projected for tax year twenty-five, twenty-six. It's gonna be four point five inside general, thirty-eight point eight outside general, and then we even rejected that emergency. That was suspended for a half year, four point eight two for total miles of forty-eight point one two. Again.
You check these over?
We've had some discussions Friday and this morning, so I think that. I think with twenty-five, something.
Totally screwed up.
Well.
Right, because this is calendar year, and we, I'm having trouble going from sheet to sheet.
It's always like. It's always been, yes.
So, yes, all of these are wrong, because it's.
That's why I said, how do we ever get to those numbers?
Right, you don't.
And that's the reason.
Okay.
Well, we do, we use their actual from their budget.
Sixteen seventeen.
That is their projection.
So that's, those, those ending balances are June thirtieth.
That's her prediction.
When they do an actual ending balance, I'm thinking that's June thirtieth, right?
Yes, that is the actual, because we use their budget, the two-year look back, so we use their actual numbers.
Oh, so.
But again, on the record, we have need in the P I fund, I am, you know. Want that on the record. We, I mean, and with this. Shifting, we will move for that.
Well. But you, in your budget, people, I mean, I don't know. In your budget, you've only demonstrated two million dollars in need towards a two point eight million dollar cash balance.
P I's are not always.
I get it, but I'm just.
Representative of what is happening every year, so it's a, it's hard to.
The only other thing I don't ever recall us doing, so. In the general fund, for estimated expense, you loaded in the sixty-seven thousand dollars?
I just did that this time around to show, because it's not a negative balance, because she does.
This emergency levy fund is nothing more than the general.
I understand that, so, which is one of the issues, but, but I'm, but I'm saying, I've never seen us take. I've never seen us reflect a negative balance, which is fine, because I get it's passed, it's basically passed through. But I've never seen us reflect a negative balance, but then load that negative balance into the estimated expense.
I just did it because.
You had to zero that fund.
But then show it as zero.
Then it would show.
I've never seen us do this.
I agree.
Okay.
Right?
And we talked about, turning that amount.
Yeah.
When you lowered your, your revenue, we would lower that amount, and then just shift it to the expenses on the general.
That's what I did on my sheet. If you'll get my second to last thing.
We lowered that to zero, and then that increased.
This should be, this should be, thanks to general expenses, should be forty-seven eighty-one, one thirty-two.
Agreed, understood. I just left it there so that it was, I left it there for the visual, I guess, that's why I put it in yellow.
Otherwise, you're counting expenses twice.
Yeah.
So you're gonna do the estimated revenue and estimated expense are gonna match each other for zero, but then you're gonna take that sixty-seven thousand and keep it in the estimated expense of the general.
We increased the estimated expenses by sixty-seven thousand.
By the deficit, that, that's fine, I just thought it should look that way.
Okay.
So do you wanna?
That'll zero that out.
You wanna repeat it again?
For the emergency levy?
No, but just go through.
The whole thing?
Yes, please, sorry.
The beginning fund in the general, the beginning balance in the general fund is twenty-five million, twenty-nine thousand, eight ninety. Estimated revenue at thirty-four million, two seventy-seven fifty-three. Estimated expenses are at thirty-three, nine thirty-seven, nine fifty-six, leaving an ending cash balance of twenty-five million.
And just a note for the record, their, their submitted expenses were thirty-three million, eight seventy, or fifteen. We increased, we have increased their expenses by the sixty-seven thousand, which is coming out of the emergency fund. That's why that number's hiding.
Correct. Then the emergency, they had estimated the revenue at four million, eight hundred forty-eight, six seventy-three. The revenue considered at fifty percent for that suspended levy brought it to four million, seven eighty-one, one thirty-two. Estimated expenses were at four million, eight forty-eight, six seventy-three, leaving a zero ending balance.
No, we're also moving to, the Budget Commission's, the Budget Commission's going to consider expenses of four million, seven eighty-one, one thirty-two.
Correct.
Because you've been estimated ending balance of zero. Okay.
And permanent improvement has a beginning cash balance of two million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, five seventy-five. They requested revenue in the amount of a million, two hundred and thirty, six sixty-five. Certification to be considered is six hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred fifty-three. Estimated expenses are at two million, leaving an ending balance of a million, four hundred seventy-nine eighty-eight.
And the estimated revenue that the Budget Commission is considering is due to the shift of the inside knowledge. Okay, that we did the full knowledge. Okay, are you good?
Motion two for?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna make you come in again, Karen, I'd like you to.
Didn't hear this.
She's like. There's two. That's. She could have.
Back, right.
Right. Obviously, it's the paper now.
No, then.
We need that bottom.
This is our.
Are you gonna send me them? Send them to the one ladies? I can say, yeah. Well, just make it happen. That way my auditors will be happy. Those mirrors, I said this as well, since Karen's here. So this is, West Georgia, their amendment number four, they're increasing their special revenue fund by. And then their capital project fund by three million, new special revenue fund total is six million, five hundred forty-two thousand, one fifty-three and eighty-three cents. Capital project fund is nine million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred and seven and eighty cents. Total certificate is seventy-six million, nine forty-six, one hundred sixty dollars and ninety-seven cents in appropriations to.
They'll move.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
It has failed, it is.
I like it when you use the big felt tip.
I don't like the felt tip.
Like, they have some chalk.
Either there, I go to crayon. Crayon's probably more my speed. I don't have one of those.
I'll get you one of these.
Highland.
Hey, it's the same thing, right?
That would be like your, I'm permanently here or something.
But you are.
It's one where it's two. And she gets one, which I always do. I didn't know you were a lefty.
Yep, lots of trouble. On the page sideways.
Pam's a righty, but she writes like a lefty, she turns.
She does, I know, I thought she was a lefty from her backslam down.
She writes backslam, and she's writing in.
A special. She's special. Next up is Georgia County, amendment number four. They have an increase in their special revenue funds for corp tech and Fund two zero one one of fifty thousand, five hundred and twenty. And then they have an increase in their capital project fund, four zero three three, which is phase two of a million, one hundred fifty thousand, eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. New special revenue fund total is a hundred twenty-four million, nine hundred forty-four thousand, six seventy-eight, fifty cents, capital projects, twenty-eight million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars, seventy-six cents, total certificate, two hundred eighty-seven million, nine sixty-two, one sixty-seven and fifty-seven cents.
That's the highest that's ever been. Is that correct?
I feel like we had two ninety cents. That could be low.
We usually hover around two twenty-five.
I remember, I was on here when we hit two hundred million, oh my god, four hundred billion dollars.
Sure, I'm sure.
Oh, so moved?
I'll say, yes.
Yes. Estimated resources here, a lot of money, four hundred billion dollars a year.
So we just have a couple of questions. My first question is, we have health district budget coming of on April twenty-first. Did you have a location you wanted that city to advertise?
Redford, Razor over there?
Yes.
Razor, class, sir. Is anybody from the state coming, do you know?
Not, not.
The Jeremy?
We do not know if you're coming.
Okay.
Invite him. I didn't know if there was a desire to cancel the March third meeting.
I'll be here.
Okay.
Right, and that's, I think, yeah.
That's Monday.
That's Monday.
Yeah, it's, it'll be here, it's a week away.
I will be.
Always, we're excited.
Well, I, I, last year, we ended up doing that, but you know, it's up to you.
Can you cancel it March seventeenth?
Yes.
Reason.
No, we moved the agenda. The seventeenth is still in place, we have the agenda, we just switched the levy departments to April seventh.
I disappeared from my calendar, you're on the seventh, that's why.
They sent out a new meeting invite.
I did.
I did. Received it.
Seventeenth, I have nothing.
I'll send you out another.
So we are meeting on seventeenth?
Yes, we just changed the agenda, because I, even in the meeting invite, I said it was an agenda change.
So we're moving that meeting, that's the rest.
On the seventeenth is going, yeah, just a regular meeting.
So what are we doing in the levy departments?
April seventh.
Should've gotten it, right? No, maybe, maybe I have, I'm gonna.
Send iPhone?
On a different calendar.
What, Androids, they just automatically pop up as.
At least he's attached agenda.
Then, just so we recap, we do have several entities, we have not received the year-end certificate.
Or are they?
We're showing Middlefield Village, Chardon Township, Claritin Township, Hampton Township.
Chardon, Middlefield Village?
Did you get Claritin?
I just got Middlefield Village, Chardon, Claritin.
Middlefield Township.
Littlefield Township, too.
Parkman Township. Chester, Chester Park. Russell fifteen forty-five Park. And East Georgia Fund.
Okay, so they've got trouble on.
Till the end of this month.
Got to the end of this month.
They just sent.
Yeah, I got to the end of this month before U A N shuts them off.
Well, I know that Chardon was working on theirs.
Anderson was working on that. Well, I.
I know that Claritin, there's.
Christie's talking to Claritin, I've already talked to Christie. So, so who do we, we think we're covered with Chardon, Claritin?
Well, I know that they were working on it in Hampton.
In Middlefield.
Yeah.
He always forgets. But he's not on U A N.
No, but you still have that same sixty-day window, temporaries, right?
Yeah.
Just give him a call, give Nick a call, he'll, it's nickel, well, Nick also does that East Georgia.
Yeah, yes.
So if you do, that'll.
I think we'll just reach out to all of them and just say our records indicate we have not received.
Yeah, just do a generic email to them, just to remind them.
Yeah.
Uh, Parkman's concern.
She's always kind of. Serious.
Is she? Well, she's not late, I mean, she will be after, end of February.
One year, she turned it. Yeah.
Yeah, they just need to make sure that they can do their year-end by, by the end of February.
So do we cancel, or March third?
I don't think. It's on the table. It's still on the, I, I have.
What did you say?
It's up to you. I don't know if we'll get anything in, I mean. And even if we don't, we can do it.
Yeah, I don't care. I'm here if you need, so.
Okay. We should take action now. Um, if we're gonna cancel.
Cancel, yeah, because I have to.
Okay, let's cancel. I moved it, I moved, canceled the March thirteenth.
We're like, the second, yeah, second.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then we're, so next means to be.
Now your mind is clear?
Next means it'll be March seventeenth, which I need an invite for.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, so, so getting back to these entities, amateur, you're gonna do an email and they should just copy me so I know that you sent them, in case I get a call.
Yeah, we'll go and send it to you on that.
I'm surprised there's this many, this is unusual.
Yeah, I mean, usually we have a one or two, but not a whole pile of them.
They just can't get it sent to us. It's not, they.
They need the certificate, though.
They generate the certificate.
No, no, stick an estimated resource, if they can't generate that.
Oh, no, but.
They have to have that for the auditor, when they come in, they're gonna say.
They do, they have to have it before they do.
Depends where than you have available.
They do, but.
Okay.
I'll bet you a majority of them. Oh, I just forgot to say.
Okay, well, that could be, but I'm worried with the U A N people, just so they know.
They get locked up.
They get cut off the sixty-fifth, sixty-first.
Okay.
And then they can't, they can't go back, I mean, it's.
It's like a Friday.
Yeah.
You know, it's this week. I mean, I was, she's, my, my, by the first, end of the first month, I used to panic, get down to the last thirty days. Anything can go wrong. I did hear there's, there's a lot of problems with U A N computers, right?
Uh, yeah.
Their version, they, they pushed out all-new hardware, and whoever did the imaging, they outsourced the imaging to the Windows system. And they imaged it wrong, and it's, it won't work, won't work, so now they're sending new computers.
Yeah, I just got a new computer, but it wasn't the problem, it was with my new computers, my old computer.
Yeah, there's, there's a problem with the imaging. They, they somehow, they, they outsourced imaging this year. Probably shouldn't have done that. And they don't have remote imaging, so they have to. First, they sent some people a disc, the disc didn't work, and then they just sent all the computers. So. Um, anything else?
I have a couple of kind of other questions.
I've got more people on this time than ever.
Hello. Um. I just wanna make sure I've got the scheduling details, so March third is canceled, right?
Well, Jim's in charge of scheduling.
Yes, it's canceled.
Yeah, okay, then the seventeenth is on, but a regular meeting, and then all levy departments are now April seventh.
Yeah.
That's correct, and is that happening at the appraisal conference room?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect.
We like being cozy.
Yeah, it's a lot of people in, in that room, um. Then I just wanted to request today's certificates, and could I also, could I get all those sheets with the numbers from West G, because I just wanna make sure that I followed everything.
They're gonna redo the, the front sheet, and then they'll send you the updated one, because Karen needs a front sheet anyway. Otherwise, you have to do all these pencil scratches that we did.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Good, thanks. Anyone else?
Uh, this is Bill, I've, I got a couple of comments, if you will allow me to show you some slides.
Sure.
Okay, um, first of all, you guys, I know that there's lots of different parts to the, the whole West G budget thing. But there was one part that you talked about, uh, last meeting, that, let me get this pulled up, or try to. Uh, here.
Yeah, your camera's off, right, okay.
There it is.
Okay. Um, you, you talked a lot about the cash percent of expenses, and there were some things there that, um, caught me surprised. You were showing how much higher West G was than the other schools in the, in the county. So I decided to do a little bit more of a deep dive into it. And let me just, first of all, tell you, because I'm not sure you understand, know my, I'll say, resume. I have a PhD in chemistry, forty-one plus years in industrial research and development. And one of the things that I've done is completed the coursework for Six Sigma Black Belt, also for trees, which is another problem-solving technique. And, in fact, in twenty-seventeen, I was honored as one of the top twenty scientists within corporate G E. So you throw some numbers in front of me, and it's like, oh, wow, this looks like a fun thing to tackle. And so I went and looked at the percent expenses. Because looking at just the five within the county is a really small sample size. And so I went back and looked to see where we were with respect to all of the whole state. And you can see here that. We've got two in the county that are down here, as far as percent cash expenses. We've got one here, one here, and this is West G. Now, with a larger sample size, you can actually see whether or not this is a normal distribution or not. With just five, you really can't tell. And you can see from this normal distribution in the orange, that. Uh, it really isn't a normal distribution of cash expenses with the number of schools. And, uh, West G is really close here to the, uh, the median. Uh, twenty-seven percent of Ohio schools have higher cash percentages than West G. That's all of this stuff out here. So you see some are way out here. Now, those are outliers. Uh, I wouldn't want to be in that school district. But in any case. If, when you look at it this way, our cash percent is not as. Uh. Draconian as it looks like when you just look at the, the five within the, the state or in the county. I'd also point out, it's interesting that if you look at the other, uh. Neighboring. Counties, and I'll show you another slide on it later, but, uh. Actually, there is. One school in Lake County, which is out here. Much higher than everything else. And that is the Auburn Tech Center, which. Most of the schools.
Most of the. Just, just to note, you, you didn't pull just traditional schools. You pulled all schools, correct?
I pulled all schools, all six hundred sixty.
Yep.
Uh, the whole file.
Difference, the difference in the statistics, Bill. I, I didn't, I don't create my, my charts. I use the Ohio Department of Education's charting. They don't use median. They don't look for a bell shaped curve for normal distribution. They, they go on raw data and they simply give you, uh, line graph, uh, comparatives. Um, so. I, I mean, I, I tried to, I tried personally to avoid creating my own. Statistical methodology because I didn't want to run into conflict with the Ohio Department of Education's method. So I'm just using their numbers straight up.
Okay. Uh, it's still, I would argue that we need to look at a larger, uh, group of schools than just the county. To see where West G falls within all the schools in the, in comparable kinds of schools, not just in the county. And so then.
Well, well, the budget commission though can't look outside of Jogga County. Every, every county has its own budget commission.
I understand that, but if you're going to say that we are really bad as far as our cash percent expenses. Then you really should compare with other, uh, reason, uh, like minded schools, I would argue. And if indeed you look at the top twenty schools in Ohio, then we're like in the middle for cash percent expense. We're not really out here at, uh, an outlier out here. We are more or less where you would expect to be. And I understand that you don't want to do the statistics, uh, you're just copying from the state. And I guess what I'm arguing. Is that when you do that, you, uh, actually are skewing the results. So if I also look at all of Northeast Ohio. And you look at performance index versus cash percent expense. This is for Gi, uh, Cuyahoga, Jogga and Lake. See, they're all kind of grouped together here. And it's not like this one out here is West Jogga. This one is actually in Cuyahoga County, obviously, because from the score. So here there are forty-five schools that we're looking at. You may still argue, well, it doesn't make any difference. You're only responsible for the county. But I would still argue that it's important for you to look at, uh, a comparable type of database. Not just pick the ones that, uh. Slant the skew what the results look like. You need to look at a whole much wider range. And if you don't want to do the statistics, you just want to take the state, want to make sure it matches the state. Uh, okay. But I think that that, uh, puts us in a disingenuous position.
Well, I, I think, I, I don't disagree, but I, I would say similar to your analysis. You don't include Asta Bula or Trumbull. Um, in yours, and yet I think Asta Bula would far skew the numbers negatively. Asta Bula's cat, Asta Bula's school cash is very low as a county.
Uh, let me go back to slide one if I have problems finding my cursor here. Let me make it do it this way. Okay. Asta Bula, you say, is going to be out in here. And one of the reasons why you see that this is a non-normal distribution, I think. Is because when schools are out in this area here, they're approaching, uh, fiscal watch. And so these schools that are running out here have got to change one way or another. The state's gonna make them change. Right?
I mean, I, I don't think Berkshire or Kinston are anywhere near a fiscal watch, and those are the two G's on the far left side, I'm assuming.
Okay. Uh, there's still some other schools down here. You're saying Asta Bula, I could pull them up, but I'm not, I don't think we need to do it right now. But I can go back and pull them up and put Asta Bula. And Trumbull County, whatever other counties you want in Northeast Ohio. On this tomorrow, uh, to indicate where various other, uh, school districts are.
Well, I, I'm, I'm gonna stick with using the Ohio Department of Education's. Statistic, statistical analysis. Be, just be, simply because they are monitoring all Ohio schools. And they are, they group them. I mean, I know you didn't group them here. They typically group statistics by traditional school. Versus vocational school versus, um, uh, non vocational and non traditional. So there are different brackets of schools, all having different funding requirements. They even note, I believe in some data that I read. That the, um, joint vocational schools have some of the highest cash reserves, um, as a percent of expense. Um, so that skews the bell shaped curve considerably across the state. Uh, and I, I'm just sticking with their numbers because I just didn't wanna have. I didn't want to be. Party to somebody saying, well, whatever method you're using to statistically represent these numbers. You're doing it to show it a certain way. I, I, I believe the state is pretty well, um, armed to. Show statistics in any manner that they think is reasonable. And the manner they chose is the one I, I accepted. So I, I'm not denying your statistical analysis. I'm simply saying it doesn't align. With the state's representation of average. You're using medians, you're using, uh, a normal distribution. The state doesn't do that.
Okay.
You know, and I, I don't know how much the budget commission wants to adopt a particular non-standard methodology. Um, when the state has in fact, you know, concluded a certain way. Um, I think, I think that's a lobbying issue that your schools should have with the state. If they're not representing these numbers clearly, or, or perhaps what you believe is, is accurately. That's an issue for the state to change, not an issue for the budget commission to use a different set of metrics. We'd be an outlier. Of how we're analyzing budgets compared to the other eighty-seven counties in Ohio.
Okay, well, then I would just, uh, ask that when you compare the schools within, uh, Jogga County. And. You use the state's methods. That you include other schools in the area using the state's methods as well, so that you have a larger sample size. Because a sample size of five is very small.
Well, I, I, I mean, again, I, I would tell you a couple of things. One. You know, we, we. First of all, these were Chuck's slides. You know, we're looking at, we're looking at cash. And Chuck illustrated it two different ways. He, he compared. All of the school districts in the county with each other, and then he compared all of their cash as a percentage of expenses. To the state, which has collected all the school districts. Into, into a percentage. Um, but, but I would also tell you that. You know, while that, that factor. May weigh differently with members of the budget commission. I mean, there was one member of the commission who wanted to cut your revenue to make your. Cash balance match the state average and, and that is not the, the route that the entire commission took, that, that motion was made and, and. It failed for lack of a second, so. It's not like the budget commission took, took, it's not an arbitrary number. It's a, it's a, it's a number that the state has produced. Um, the budget commission didn't take that and. And make decisions just based upon that, but I will tell you that. That, that is some, that is a factor to weigh what you are compared to other school districts in the county. And what you are compared to what the state average is. Um. You know, Kinston isn't having any problems and, and their cash balance as a percentage of expenses is significantly lower. And their performance is, is similar to yours. So, and, and again, we're not supposed to weigh performance, whether you're high performing. Or low performing, that has no impact on the budget commission. Uh, decision in my opinion, but what I will tell you is. For you to have twenty-five million dollars and then add to. Your. Surplus. That's what weighed. For me and, and then also. Having an inside mileage that goes to permanent improvement, which results in an unfolded tax increase for your residents. When you have over twenty-five million dollars in the bank. That's what I took into account. For taking our, our action, which was very minimal income adjustment.
Yeah, I, and I understand, Mr. Flays, and I appreciate the, uh, the action that you two gentlemen took versus the other, uh, motion. Because it's obviously significantly differed. Um, let me move on to one other thing that came up in the, a discussion. And that was the use of a substitute levy and. Um. I'm not a lawyer, so I may not be reading this right. You guys can tell me. But I found in Ohio Revised Code, this discussion of, uh, the substitute levy. And it appears to me that a, putting on a substitute levy to replace an emergency levy or whatever other kind of levy. Requires a vote of the people. And I think in our discussion the other day, we weren't sure whether or not it did and whether, uh, you could just, uh. Make a mo, a move and just call it a substitute levy. So.
No, no, no. I only, we, we, we know it will require you to go to the, the ballot box.
Okay.
I think the issue we were discussing was, could you do it at any time? Or did it have to be within the year of the expiration of, of the levy?
Okay. I missed that part in our discussion.
I, I think, Bill, I think, you know, there's a. I, I personally don't want to preoccupy. My view of a budget based solely on cash. As a percent of expense. That's why I think. There are, as we mentioned and discussed at the budget hearings. There's a myriad of issues that you have to take into consideration when evaluating a budget of, of being reasonable and, and demonstrating need. Um. Certainly, one of the aspects at the end of the day is, is the cash and whether you're adding to the cash or not, but. I, I think, I think we're missing the point that the biggest portion of. The issue that's been brought to the table now for two years with, um, West G. Has been the whole concept of emergency levies and the purpose of those levies. And, and I don't want to, I don't want to emphasize cash over that aspect of the argument that we've made for two years. Um. You know, there's a number of factors that go into. Um, somebody asked me the question once, well, how, how can, will you ever accept, um, a P I levy with a, 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 a large cash balance? You, you can't answer a question like that unless you know all of the circumstances. You, you, it's, you have to take everything in its totality and every, every budget submission stands on its own merit. And so that's what we attempt to do every year in looking at everyone's budget. It's not just comparing one budget to a bunch of other budgets. It's, every budget has to stand on its own. So I, I don't want, I don't want you to think that cash as a percent of expenses is, is like the magic wand because it's not. Um. It, it also has to do with. How that money was accumulated, under what scenario, and what did the voters think they were giving that money for? Was it for an emergency or was it to accrue cash? I think that's a simple question.
We, we basically have a.
And.
When they were originally.
When we, well, even when they're passed in nineteen, they were needed because we hadn't had any of the merger. And we hadn't had the revaluation. So those things were in there. They were.
We disagree.
You have to look at the prior forecast and what were required.
No, no, we don't. You, you submit a five-year forecast to the state. And that's a requirement by law for you. The budget commission has absolutely zero ability.
Determine whether or not to put a levy.
But when you renewed that two thousand nineteen levy, you had, you knew that you had an ending balance as of June thirtieth, since I believe that was a November vote. You had an ending balance of fifteen million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, four fifty-three in cash.
But you have to look at a five-year forecast. So the law says that we have, we have to look at a five-year forecast and put a levy.
The budget commission has to look at the ensuing year. That is the requirement.
I understand that's the thought.
That's not the thought. That is what the statute states. It does not even mention.
We have to make our determination on what it needs. And we need, you can't just turn a spigot on and pass a levy and you get the money. I mean, we get half the money in one year and you get the rest of it. It takes.
Eighteen months. Just to that point, and I, I, I don't want to turn this into an argument.
I'm not trying to either.
To that point, as Jim indicated, when you renewed that levy, you had fifteen million. You've now, you've now. Approved the renewal of that levy and accumulated an additional ten million. So the need is not being demonstrated. There's ten million more than what you said you would need it, when you renewed it. I mean, you disagree that you've increased your cash since that renewal.
And we have need associated with those, those in the fiber.
You have need to. It's just in the form of cash. Cash is not need.
Cash will be needed as we go through our five-year forecast.
Will be needed and demonstrating need are two different things.
And we're gonna disagree on, on those things.
Every, I would venture to say every school's five-year budget. I did five-year budgeting when I was at a township.
Yeah.
I always had a deficit spending year.
We have one now. We're in deficit spending.
I give her, you, you showed, you showed a deficit, you, you did not show a twenty-five million dollar cash balance or anything close to it. Well, then, 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 then those five-year forecasts mean nothing. And it's not just you. That's every school district.
Something that we have been significant changes in about in ten years. I mean.
That's why you have to be careful with five-year forecasting because a lot of things change. When I was at Russell, I did five-year forecasting for six of the seven years that I was there. I had, I showed deficit spending. In one year of those five-year cycles, every time I did a five-year forecast, I didn't put a levy on to get more money. I, that was an early warning indicator to show departments and show trustees. We either have to change our spending habits, or if things go as I predict, we will, we will end up deficit spending. We never had to put a levy on. They're still doing that same technique. But. And, and they're also accruing cash. And the budget commission has told Russell, for example, you've got too much cash. You either need to do some of the things that you're claiming you have need for, or give the cash back. And, and that's consistent.
And that's what, yeah, the, the board has moved that, is moving that money. That's what you saw in some of these, that that money has been moved to do those projects at the middle.
Yeah.
So.
That's good. We, we had a tough conversation with Chardon and they, they. Did those projects and they're doing them.
Well, probably that these projects are so big that.
There's this, that bus garage is, that's, that's a big project.
No, no, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that they, I mean.
I, I, I have a problem.
The middle school versus the, you know, like, that's the high school needs to replace.
I, I have a problem as a taxpayer. Putting money into a government entity that is putting money in the bank. I want to pay my taxes when the taxes are due. And I want to get a service within a reasonable period of time of when I pay those taxes. For, over the course of ten years. West G has continually increased their cash. As a taxpayer, I should be holding that cash. And give it to you when you have, are ready to pull the trigger. There's the difference. And, and the question is saving it just in case every school district in the state of Ohio at some point in time in the future will want to build a new school. So they should all be saving infinite numbers of money.
No, but we have multiple buildings that have, yeah, that we.
I, I understand.
And have to, again, these projects take a very long time to plan and do. I mean, we're not arguing. I don't want to, I mean, I think we just need to be. It's a bigger picture. It's more complicated.
Well, it is, but you, that accrual of cash is not, is, is not being accrued to build a new building, isn't it?
In the last, you know, you're seeing that growth in cash because of revaluation.
No, no, so I know you're not, that growth is a ten-year trend. That evaluation just happened two years ago.
Oh, but we just got the. I, and we, and we dealt with that.
I don't see, that can be true. I mean. How did you just get the cash?
I mean, I'm gonna start in two thousand sixteen, so it's July first, two thousand sixteen ending balance. I'm gonna move forward.
Million dollars.
Twelve million, thirteen million, fifteen million, sixteen million, sixteen eight. Twenty-three, twenty-two million, twenty-five point three million, twenty-six point three million, twenty-five point six million.
As a matter of fact, since the revale, your cash went down.
Let's, yeah, we cut there.
Well, that, that's my point.
And there was the big jump, the big jump in two thousand twenty was from Newberry.
I. I said this during your hearing. There, there were two events that are, were not, it were not predictable. The. Windfall you received from merging with Newberry. And the windfall you received from the revale because you're at the floor.
You know, I mean, I, I think you, you have to factor in all of the circumstances and all the dynamics going into that. You know, I mean, I, I think you, you have to factor in all of the circumstances and all the dynamics going into the, to the equation. I, I'm, I mean, you, you kept saying that we're, we're going to be this new school, the new school, and that's justification in part for the cash. But then there wouldn't be a bond levy being put on if it's all going to be generated from cash.
And we're still going to have to have to suffer the mental school effects.
But I guess what I'm saying is, if you're accruing cash for a bond initiative, or to reduce the requirement of a bond initiative, I don't know that the taxpayers agree with that. Because they didn't vote to have the money accrued for a capital improvement project. They voted to have the money spent for an emergency, and that's how the money was accrued. They're analyzing the problem, and that is a factor and function of the Budget Commission. It's not just the need, but it's also the purpose that the money was collected under. And I'm going to have a real exception if somebody says, well, gee, we, we have twenty-five million dollars and we're going to use that to reduce the bond requirement, so we don't have to ask, ask the taxpayers for as much. Wait a minute. That wasn't collected under that initiative. It was collected specifically for emergency. How is building a building an emergency?
We're doing work on.
Well, you, you have a bond issue. You have to build a building.
That's a six-twelve building, but we're still keeping the, the buildings that we have in the middle school. So that has renovations. Those are multiple billion dollar renovations that have to be done.
But even so, did the taxpayers give the emergency money recognizing it was-
We're going to disagree on it.
I, I don't, listen, you, you, listen, I know it's, it's, it's not defined that it's been confined. It's emergency uses. It's to keep schools from shutting down. And I'm, I'm going to tell you, I mean, for you to take, or, and it's, and you didn't pick the, the budget deficit door number two. So your door number one for emergency purposes, emergency purposes are not permanent improvements to buildings. I mean, I think you got to, now you're, I mean, at least paying salaries. You arguably, uh, well, no, you're just throwing it into the general fund and you're using it for whatever you want.
All that O-sixteen will spend on salaries.
But I'm, I'm just telling you that, you know, throwing, it's saying, well, we can spend it on whatever we want. Well, the Attorney General says, no, you cannot.
We'll spend it on salaries.
And spending it for permanent improvements, I think, is, is, you've, it's a bridge too far. I think you're, you're opening yourself up to some issues there.
Well, the, the, all spelled salaries. That's why it's separated.
Yeah, but it said right in the, in the, in the one A G opinion that Jim read, not to be used for salaries unless it was to burn, prevent the closure of a facility.
There are multiple, you know.
Look, guys, it, it's clear that we're going to agree to disagree on a bunch of this stuff. And um, the only other comment that, a question I have for you is, uh, Mr. Walder, you referred to some other, some townships that will load things up in the uh, budget that they submit to the county. Uh, since you're only looking at a one-year picture, you made that comment last Thursday. And you guys look at only a one-year case. I got it. Uh, we have to, for the state, look at a five-year case, and you understand five-year forecasting as well. So we basically have a, a case here where we've got two different uh, outcomes that we've got to optimize for. And uh, that's what we've got to work on. And it also seems like what you're suggesting is it's uh, okay to have a budget that's submitted to the county tax commission that doesn't totally align with the one that we have to submit to the state. Is that right?
No, what I said about loading up PIs where there are a number of townships that don't know exactly when their project will hit. So they hedge their bet by putting in their capital amount in the P I submission or in the capital improvement submission, and it may or may not occur in that particular budget cycle. The other test the Budget Commission does is if it's repeatedly forecasted, but it never comes to fruition, they call that into question. So you, again, you can't take, you, the problem I'm having is you, you're conveniently taking snapshots of information and forming a conclusion from them. You have to take everything in totality.
Yeah, multiple response optimization.
Yeah, well, we, listen, we've had townships and other political subdivisions that have said they're going to do a project. They put it in their budget to justify their cash balances. And when they haven't done it for uh, multiple years, we've reduced their-
Or, or, or they said they're going to build a building, for example. It came time to pay the piper. They forecasted for it. But when they came in with their, for their next year's budget, the money was still being forecasted. And typically the Budget Commission then says, well, where are you in the process? Do you have an architectural drawing? Do you have prints? Have you gone out for a bid? We've asked those questions of even taxing agencies at the county. Uh, the Department of uh, Aging said they were going to build a building last year, and there was a lot of, of debate as to do you have an estimate of what that building will cost? And if we don't see progress being made toward the ultimate purchase that the intention was set aside for, then we're going to call that out. I mean, and so don't misinterpret what I said as saying, just lie in your budget. That's not what I meant. What I, what I meant is, what I meant was, is that people are not perfect, nor are plans. And we accept that and we understand that. We could be hard-nosed and just say, if you're not doing it, then we're not going to approve it. But we're trying to be reasonable, yet our words are being used as, as, as a target or as a weapon against us. And the problem with that is it tends to shut you down from even, even giving any input then. We just make a decision.
That's not the point. We want to open communication of what we're trying to do at the school and what we're looking at to educate our students.
I, I think the third, the, the third, the third prong of this that no one has talked about is, is that, is the public. And what the public is going to accept. And is the public going to accept um, twenty-five million dollars of cash under the scenario that they gave it to the school? And then look at giving another hundred and twenty-eight million dollars to the school to build another complex? That, that set of optics-
That's not part of this, I would say.
Well, that set of optics, though, becomes part and parcel to whether or not aside from everything else that we've seen here, there's an ethical and moral decision that has to be made here. And I'm not here to pass those judgments, but I'm here to represent the taxpayers. And I can tell you from hearing almost forty-nine percent of the people coming for B O R cases, they are worried they're being overtaxed.
And there's legislation that is being proposed. So, you know, that's being taken care of as a legislative issue. I'm, our issue today. I mean, I, it's part of legislation. They have chosen this type of funding for schools. They have constitutional amendment for how we fund schools with the twenty mile floor. I think that's, you know, something that they're looking at. There's like three or four legislative issues that are in place. As we know, and we've talked about whether the emergency levies will be part of the twenty mile floor. That certainly is going to be, uh, that will affect us, obviously. So we'd have to look at that. But, I mean, this doesn't need to be, we're all dealing with the situation of house floor. Yeah, I would give, so. All right.
Anything else? Anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Walder, for clarifying a number of those points, because you know in any kind of conversation, there's four aspects, right? There's what you said, what you thought you said, what you thought you said, what you said, what I thought I heard, and what I heard. And so your clarification of a number of these points helps us to uh, to scope out where, where we need to be looking more in the future.
Anything else?
Thank you. Move to your chair.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Good.